Ireda County Board of Commissioners, meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Steve Johnson for the indication.
Let's pray, please. And the Father, again, we come to you and thanking you for the many blessings that are ours, and thank you for this opportunity to serve you and to serve the people of this county. And we just pray that you would give us wisdom, Lord, and you would give us insight. We would be faithful stewards of everything you've entrusted to us, and we ask it in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. She may now stand and join me as we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Mashburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one addition to make, and I think a copy of it has been sent around or is being sent around right now. Because of the inclement weather, we've had a request that we, that the county commissioners extend the deadline for listing property until February the 3rd. Actually, Monday would have been the last day for listing, and obviously, because of the weather, that probably, there may have been some that were not able to comply with that. So, the tax assessor has requested that you extend the listing to February the 3rd. That means that anything that was mailed in or brought in by February the 3rd would still meet the legal requirements. So, that's going to be item Q, item Q, an extension of the 2010 listing of property.
Does anyone else have anything to add to the agenda? If not, is our motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We now have a report before the board, presentation of a mid-year report from David Swan, the CEO of Area Directors of Crossroads Behavioral Healthcare. David, good to have you tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good to be here. Good to see you all. Mr. Norman, good to see you back. Last month, I was here, and I missed you. I have prepared a mid-year report that you have. It contains three pieces of information. It contains an annual report for the last fiscal year. The body of the booklet is a, just a whole lot of facts and figures and pieces of information about Crossroads and your mental health services in Ireda County. And then, in the very back, on the right-hand side, is a mid-year budget report that is dated December 31st, 2009, that I'll speak about. I'm going to just quickly go through items, and I will identify page numbers that I just want to bring your attention to. I have flagged mine with some key important items, but if you have any questions about any of the items I might have responded to, or items that you might have read earlier, then please feel free to ask me, of course. I'm going to just start on page three, just a reflection of our national accreditation. Last Friday, we received notice from our national accreditor that we had been re-accredited for the next three years after a survey that was provided in December onsite here at Crossroads. For any of you who understand healthcare, that is about a nine-month process that culminates in a two-day site visit onsite. An incredible amount of work. I am indebted to our staff and our board for helping us to get ready. But we were notified on the 29th of January, and you'll see that at the top of the handout where I speak about accreditation. Over on page five of the booklet, you'll see the eight key functions that Crossroads provides to you through our public management system. I won't go through each of those in detail, but this essentially is the value that we render to our community. In a nutshell, it is the management of all the public resources and the public mental health services for the citizens of Ireda County. Going on over to page six, what I've done for you here is to take a fairly detailed strategic plan that our board adopted in June of 2009, a three-year strategic plan, and I have highlighted the five major strategic planning initiatives for the next three years. So, from 2009 to 2012, we are embarking on several of these, or on all of these. I want to highlight one of those that's at the top of page seven for you. It's item number two. You'll see, "Improve the Effectiveness of the Crossroads Crisis Response and Hospital Diversion System." One of the, one of the strategies and the challenges we've had for a long time now is to develop involuntary commitment psychiatric beds in a local community hospital. We have tried for many years to make that happen, and Davis Regional Medical Center has now come to the table with us and has enjoined with us, and we are planning a conversion of their 16-bed psychiatric unit to add involuntary capability late this spring, early this summer. I have been meeting with them regularly, and they have been very helpful and cooperative, and things are going along very fine. I'm very excited about that. So, sometime soon, we will have a local option so that people won't have to travel this far when they're placed on involuntary commitment. On page eight, I just pointed out the North Carolina legislative highlights from last year's lawn session. I did come and speak to you about that several times in the past, and I won't go through too many of those. Of course, the biggest item was the significant budget reductions that we have taken. As you might remember, our budget this year is $5 million less than the budget was last year, so services had to be pared back in a very dramatic way. We are past that now. We are now on a level flight, I would say, and, and so, I will continue to give updates, of course, to you through opportunities like this, and, of course, continue to keep Mr. Mashburn informed about what's happening. Over on page nine, you'll just see our revenue by sources, and you'll see the county funding and that the, that, that our county here contributes 59%, and that is relatively about the same proportion of the population that Ireda has among the three counties. Page 10, I wanted you to see especially the expenses by service categories that's in the middle, but at the bottom, I've added this chart for you that helps you to see exactly where the money goes and for what services or what particular disabilities. Sometimes, that can be helpful in answering questions for the public, and I wanted you to have that particular piece of information. So, you will see that the largest ticket item is for services to persons with developmental disabilities with about $5.5 million being spent on that population, and second, to, to people with Medicaid, and then, next, persons with mental illnesses. Page 11 just gives you a little bit of history and that we're still a work in progress with North Carolina's mental health reform. It's, it's been longer than it needs to be, and it's had lots of different convolutions to it, and, but we still continue to make it work for Ireda County, and I'm still pleased with our activity here. On page 12, I speak a little bit about regionalization. The Department of Health and Human Services that has now laid out a couple of visions and plans for itself and all of Health and Human Services. Several of those impact Crossroads. They are looking to make local management entities such as Crossroads larger in encompassing a larger population, and they're also interested in having the provider organizations step up their responsibilities and possibly to consolidate their efforts into larger provider organizations. Bless you. So, those things are mentioned there on page 12. The critical access behavioral health agencies is what would affect providers. Regionalization is what would affect us. That's in the center there. On pages 13 and 14 and 15, I have described some of the challenges or the strengths, challenges and opportunities, and the initiatives that Crossroads is embarking this year. Kind of a little detail on some of our strategic planning. Be happy to entertain any questions about that, but I won't spend a lot of time on that this evening unless you want me to. On page 16, I've highlighted the services that are still being provided with state funds, acknowledging the fact that we have had to scale back large sums of services that you will, you will see on page 17. But on page 16, you'll see a snapshot of those services that are still in play with state funds. Let me remind you that persons that have Medicaid, Medicare, or insurance are excluded from that group. They can get other types of services. This is for people that are purely state-funded or county-funded where that they're, where they have no other resources, then these are the services that are limited to them. It is, it has, of course, been scaled back as a result of the state budget reduction. On page 19, you'll see I mentioned the inpatient psychiatric hospital care once again, which is a big part of our strategy for the next year, and, of course, again, I'll say that things are going well with our partner, Davis Regional. I'm going to, I'll point to page 21, 22, and 23, which highlight the, all the different providers that we have under contract providing services here in Ireda County. There is slightly over 100 still, so we have a great depth of provider organizations that are delivering care from children as young as birthed all the way to our most elderly citizens. There is something for them that's available. On page 25, the calls by county is something that might be of interest to you, and then the urgency of need. When I speak of urgency of need, the national standard there is the word urgent is the most severely impaired or the person most in need. The word emergent is a person who is slightly less than that, and then routine means more routine, someone that can wait several days before getting care. As another way to explain that is someone who is assessed as urgent must get mental health services within two hours of contacting us, and then, someone who is emergent must get services within 48 hours. So, that's the kind of level there. You will see that there, that the, that the breakdown is 55% for routine, 26% for emergent, and 17% for urgent. And then, you'll also note that of the calls to our access crisis line, 47% of those calls come from Ireda County, and Ireda County represents 58% of our population. So, that's how that breaks down. That's based on demand, of course, and so, people call as they need to. Over on page 26, another thing, item of interest to you may be the number of individuals served here in Ireda County and the number of service events. You'll see that in Ireda, we provided 61,071 service events for over 4,300 different people. This was last fiscal year, again, so. That's the end of that booklet that I'm going to speak to. Let me just point to the budget page that's in the back, right-hand pocket. You will note that down at the bottom, you will see that we are in a negative position. We're in a negative position largely because there's, because of our state pays us two months late. They're always in arrears by two months, and so, so we are always behind in that respect. We are tracking to overspend also and go into fund balance. Our board discussed this last Tuesday night. The, because of the first four months of the fiscal year, July through October, pretty much, and even part of November into the fifth month, we, we were, we were providing lots of services and, and did not stop them real rapidly, but put them on a gradual slowdown. Even though it felt pretty, pretty drastic to all of us, it still was, was a little bit slower than probably it needed to be, and so, we therefore have been overspending by providing more services. I'll pause right there, Mr. Chairman, and see in the remaining minutes I've got left, see if you want to have me answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Any questions or comments from any of the board members?
I got a couple. Mr. Swan, you say you overspent and you've taken measures to slow things down, but you're still comfortable with your fund balance, that you're going to be okay?
Still comfortable. I wish that, that we weren't going to have to go into it as much as it looks like we might. The position has even improved since last Tuesday. Right now, we're looking at maybe, maybe a deficit of around $1.8 million, and last week, it was about 2.4. So, as we continue to go and improve our projections by looking at the, at the spend rate, it has gotten somewhat better. But right now, it looks like we will go into fund balance probably in excess of $1 million by the end of the fiscal year.
Mr. Swan, isn't it true that, that by reducing our fund balance, as we have done, if, if we had avoided that, the state would probably come in and reduce it for us and spend it the way they want to spend it? Is that not true?
Yes, it is. In fact, Mr. Williams is also making another, or is also thinking about something else. We were required to budget and spend a minimum of $500,000 in fund balance this fiscal year in order to stop, stop our state from coming after some of it. So, it looks like we're going to, we're going to probably spend about twice that amount.
Well, I congratulate you on the way you've handled all that. I don't know how you deal with those people, but I congratulate you.
Thank you.
Let me direct the attention back to what you said about Davis Hospital, and this is something I complained about in the first, and maybe this is going to be our answer to prayer. I came to understand the situation more from your side, and I think I've expressed this to you, that if we have to involuntary, or you have to involuntarily commit someone, then you have no control over where the available bed is.
Exactly.
It might be an hour from here, it might be five hours.
It could be an Ashford, Wilmington, Charlotte.
The problem that presented to us over at the Sheriff's Department was, we have a deputy in a car tied up for a day and a half or two days. Has Davis made any commitment to you as far as the number of beds?
Yes, sir. I have a written commitment for five beds for involuntary commitments.
You think that'll be adequate?
Yes, I believe it will.
All right. Next thing, there was some talk, and I talked to Chairman Williams about this at some point, about these catchment areas. And at one time, you were having, you folks were having some discussions with some other catchment areas about merging and so forth. How much pressure is the state putting on you to do that? Is that something you're aggressively pursuing, or you're just?
I want to say that it's, that right now, it's not aggressive, but there's encouragement to have discussions. I think in the future, there may be either a combination of incentives or a constriction of the amount of money that we have available to perform the functions that we are required to provide. So, as they limit the amount of money that's available, but don't eliminate the requirements, it will be more and more difficult for smaller programs over the years to continue to meet those expectations.
Okay. All right. One more. On page 18, if I can direct the attention, it says, Adult Developmental Disability Service, and you say these have either been reduced, or capped, or done away with?
Mm-hmm.
If, if you had to prioritize those things, if the state started acting responsibly again about commitments they've already made and not keeping, could you prioritize those as, as to what you would first go after if the money became available?
That's an excellent question. Yeah. I would probably pick, if I had only a limited amount of money, I would pick two, if that's all I could fund, and that would be developmental therapy and targeted case management. Those are probably the next in line for the most severely disabled of that population. All of these are very important, so don't take my answer as that something is, you know, is not that important. But if you're ranking them with level of severity, and that's the way that our board has asked me to do that over the last six months, and so, I would, I would take the same tack about that, and I believe that's probably the best way to do it. It would be better to get most of those things back, most of those services back, even including personal assistance and personal care, but I think that's going to have to be more limited than it has been in the past, and probably will never go back to what it, what it once was as far as the volume of those services being available.
Okay. Well, number one on my list was developmental therapy.
Mm-hmm.
I appreciate you saying that.
Absolutely. Thanks, sir.
One thing you brought up, Mr. Johnson, that with, with Davis Hospital, we'll have six, five or six beds, is that right?
Five beds.
Five beds. If any time they're not full by our area, Crossroads, there would be nothing that would keep Catawba or any of our neighboring LMEs areas to use those beds. We get priority, I guess, but if they're not full.
That's correct.
And if, if they're full by people from outside our service area, and then we need that bed, then what happens?
I don't think we can bump people out that are already in the hospital. I think that's going to be the obligation that Davis Hospital has, but patients would come through emergency rooms in our region, and so, if someone is waiting, the longer they wait, the higher the priority goes. Let me also add that, that the funds that come to buy these beds is coming from the Department of Health and Human Services that Crossroads has available. This is a grant that's around $1.2 million annualized that will allow us to buy those five beds at a daily rate that the hospital has agreed to. So, we've really gone pretty far along with this, and that's why, that I can talk about it so freely. Now, things are, things are really just moving along, and we're really looking forward to that. They, they still have to do some building modifications on that unit, probably not be ready to open until about the 1st of June. So, there's some, some things that have to take place, but the details are being worked out right now that are making this a real possibility.
That's a lot better than it has been, and I thank you for your work on that.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, David, for coming and giving the report tonight.
Thank you for having me.
This is a public hearing, a consideration of an economic development incentive for an undisclosed company, incentive of $184,054 over five years, based on a $13 million investment. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, commissioners. This is a very exciting time in our community with this particular project, as it is an expansion project for a company that's been in our community for a number of years. This company's been in Statesville since 1954. It is a manufacturer. They manufacture a technical product which is currently in high demand globally. They do have an offshore facility located in Bangalore, India, but it is only used for final assembly, warehousing, and distribution as required by tariffs and other international trade agreements. Statesville houses the corporate office, and all the primary manufacturing is done in our community. This particular company is looking at a $13 million expansion. This is, is based over a three-year period. In addition, they would create 100 new jobs in our community over a five-year period, and these jobs would pay above the state 3J wage average. What we are requesting on behalf of this particular company is a incentive based upon taxable investment. That taxable investment over a three-year period. This grant would be over a five-year period, and certainly, the, the grant that we've requested is based upon the appraised assessed value, which certainly can fluctuate from year to year. That, at this stage, that estimate is, as you'd indicated, $184,054, although that number can fluctuate depending on assessed value. We appreciate your time this evening, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Smith? Hear none. I now declare this meeting to be in a public hearing. Is anyone wish to speak either for or against this project? Seeing no one, I now declare this meeting, this public hearing to be closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion. We grant the request.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there any comments or any discussions? Hear none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries for one. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. One additional comment. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at Statesville Civic Center, there will be a press conference held on this exciting project.
In straight matters, Mr. Mashburn?
Mr. Chairman, the first item is a request from the tax collector, and then immediately following that will be a request from the Elections Department.
I'm here tonight as a requirement of law and to present you with a list of unpaid taxes that are lien on real property as of the end of January. I've given the listing to Jean that she has over there. The listing, this is for all jurisdictions, totals $10,537,314. Also, on receipt of this report, I'm requesting that you set a date for advertising the tax liens, and I'm requesting the date of March 17th, and this is very similar to what we did last year.
Any questions, Mr. Purchase? Hear none. Is there a motion?
Motion to grant the request.
Including the date. He just, what was the date again?
March 17th. For advertising.
Okay. Motion's been made. Any discussion? Hear none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Hello.
Good evening, Becky.
I'm here to request that you approve a one-stop site for the southern end of the county in Mooresville for the May primary, and to approve budget number 44, to transfer funds from our departmental supplies to part-time salaries, overtime, and FICA. And this request is made solely on numbers due to the growth and the rapid increase in voter registrations that we have in our precincts in the southern end. We have learned from past elections that the more voters that we can get to vote early makes for just a much better election day for our precinct officials and our voters. So, with that, we would like to ask you to approve that one-stop site. The amount is $6,000.
Any questions, Becky? Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we, that we transfer this money over to provide a one-stop voting site.
Okay. Motion has been made. Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a request from the Sheriff's Department for a budget amendment. Mike Phillips, Phillips will make that presentation.
Good evening. The Sheriff's Department is asking for consent to approve $5,000 of our seized funds to SCAN, Stop Child Abuse Now. SCAN is an organization that partners with the Sheriff's Office in providing programs and services to victims of child abuse. This funding will help them achieve their objectives and goals, and will help them to remain a viable resource for the Sheriff's Office in child abuse.
Okay. Any questions, Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have a couple of the SCAN board members here.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Ronnie Crisco. I'm an attorney down in Mooresville. I'm the current chairman of the board for SCAN here in Idell County. Give you guys a brief overview as to, to Mr. Johnson's question as to what this money's gonna be used for. We have three primary programs that we offer here at SCAN. Parent Aid, which is a one-on-one, in-home program that provides services to families at risk for child abuse, or families that are already in the DSS system. Our volunteers and our staff go into the homes on a regular basis and are actually in the child's environment, helping to teach some more positive strategies to the parents, try to stop abuse before it starts, and certainly before it can be repeated. Second program is ARC, At-Risk Kids. Now, that program is, for the most part, funded through a separate state grant, so it's, has its own budget. That deals with children who are already in the juvenile justice system. They have counselors. We are referred by the court to provide counseling services to these young men and women. And then our final program that we, that we focus on is the Family Connections Program, which is supervised visitation. To my knowledge, there really is no other option if there is not an acceptable family member. When there's a potential danger to the child and supervised visitation is required, we have a, a safe and kid-friendly environment. We have monitors both inside and outside the room, as well as video monitoring capability for those visits, and sometimes employ some of the fine men and women from either the Police Department or the Sheriff's Department to help monitor in case anything untoward happens. With respect to these individual funds, Parent Aid, most specifically, is where we have the greatest need. We're operating at a fairly significant budget shortfall currently. We have a number of fundraising efforts that we're working on that we're trying to address that, but we need every dollar we can certainly get. We've been here, although I have just been involved in the last year or so, we've been here for going on 20 years now, providing referral services, and in fact, I think we are the only referral service that DSS here in this county has available to them for these particular kind of services. And I would just point out to the board that if you look at the one-year recidivism rates, the number of cases that DSS becomes involved with that have subsequent reports of problems in the home having to do with abuse, the last figures that I had available to me showed that the recidivism rate for DSS cases in general was about 30%, some sort of recurrence that gets referred to them within a year. Our recidivism rate is about, goes anywhere from eight to 10% per year over the last number of years. So, if you look at the cost of a child in foster care and the marginal cost of one more, and consider how many SCAN saves this county year in, year out, I think that the funds will more than justify themselves. So, I would ask the board to consider granting the request appreciatively. Thank you very much. And if there are any other questions, I can ask you those.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Crisco, the, the Family Connections supervised visitation.
Yes, sir.
What would happen if, if you guys weren't around?
Well, this is kind of my area. I am primarily a divorced attorney, so I deal with these issues. What generally happens is the judge will inquire of the parties or the attorneys whether or not there is an acceptable family member. As you can imagine, if there is a situation where supervised visitation is what's called for, they're typically high-conflict cases. If there is no one that is agreed upon, the court doesn't go about conducting its own inquiries, interviewing people to potentially be monitors for the visitation, so if they can't come to some sort of arrangement, those visitations won't happen, at least in the interim, and that parent is denied the opportunity to have meaningful access to the children until the next time the court evaluates the situation, which, as any domestic attorney will tell you, is a moving target. Could be a couple of months, could be a year or more. There are factors of time, money, and the will to sort of keep going in those cases that intervene. So, short answer, no, there's not gonna be another option for that parent, at least in the short term.
And, and let me understand, that, that parent that you're talking about, that, what is the reason for the supervision?
Our judges are constrained by very little, other than the best interest of the child and however they define that term. So, it could be anything from prior abuse. It could be evidence that the court has heard of a drug and alcohol problem. It could be mental illness that is being managed to one degree or another, but maybe not to the court's satisfaction. The most typical case involves, in my experience, a temporary custody arrangement. Orders are designed so that when a case is initiated, a temporary order is put in place for any number of months, usually not much more than a year, but still that's obviously significant in a child's life. And my impression is that judges, rightly so, are very risk averse when it comes to the safety of children, and I, I don't, I don't fault them for that logic, but it puts parents in an uncomfortable situation if you have a parent who has an issue in their past, be it a criminal issue, a substance abuse issue, a mental health issue, or an abuse issue, which could be related to all of those other conditions. They may be managing it, they may be working towards progress in their lives that's gonna enable them to be a better parent to that child, but if there's not going to be any access to them, then, then ultimately, some sort of meaningful relationship just may not be possible, but, but those are the spectrum of problems we're talking about.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, after Mr. Crisco's presentation, I feel this request is justified. I'll make the motion, we approve budget amendment number 45 to appropriate the money to SCAN from the Sheriff's Budget.
There is a motion on, on the table. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries five, oh.
Our planning director, Ron Smith, will present the next five items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. The first item that I have tonight is a reconsideration of a vote that took place back in September of 2009. I have submitted to you a copy of the information that was given to you back in September, as well as the minutes, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, although since this is a reconsideration, I would, I would request that you stay away from trying to get any new information from either me or anyone that might be in the audience tonight. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer.
Mr. Smith, I was not here in September, but I have gone back and looked at the information you sent us. There's been a lot changed since then, the kind of, the type of zoning nodes. Could you go back and just briefly give us an update from what it was at that time, what it is now?
Well, the request was to go from residential agriculture to highway business conditional district, and at the time, we were working on our 2030 Horizon Plan, our, our new comprehensive plan. We were anticipating that that was going to be adopted soon after this case was heard. However, at the time, we still were working, by and large, under our 1997 land use plan. The 97 plan did not support this request. The, the, there was not a commercial node at this, at this location. However, the 2030 plan does show a commercial node at this location, which would garner a favorable recommendation if it were to come in today to a business district.
So, if, if you meet all the requirements of the building code, then at the present time, it do fall into compliance?
Yes, if, if this were to be rezoned to highway business, this would fall into compliance with our 2030 plan. There are some significant building issues that would have to be addressed through our Building Inspections Department, but, you know, they, they would have to go through that process.
Okay.
And it's still the, the position of the, of the Planning Board to recommend for approval?
For the Planning Board or the staff?
The staff, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we've always, you know, back in September, we recommended for this based on what we thought was coming forth with the 2030 plan, with several conditions that were to go along with it, and the obvious requirement of going through the building code and bringing up standards. And I, and I would stand by that now, since I've had really no reason to change.
Has the owner agreed to improve the building site, or building, and bring it up to the conditions necessary for highway business?
They have agreed to the conditions associated with the rezoning. They could not occupy the building without going through, as a business, without going through the building code, so whether they like it or not, they've gotta agree to do that if they want to use it as a, as a business.
So, they've actually never been given, maybe Mr. Niblock can answer this, but to your knowledge, they've never been given a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, I'll defer to Lynn.
Okay. You always getting drug into the middle of something, don't you, Mr. Niblock?
The building was originally permitted as an accessory building for rural home occupancy, and that was, and those buildings are built to the residential code. It was permitted, it was inspected, and it was issued a CO under those conditions. However, the commercial requirements are considerably different, so if the board chooses to grant the rezoning, there are some issues, or some accessibility issues, one of which is bathroom facilities, and some other issues that would need to be addressed, as Mr. Smith has said, to meet the minimum building code requirements for the commercial use before we could issue a certificate of occupancy to utilize the building for that purpose. If the board chooses to grant this rezoning request, my staff and myself will be glad to work with Mr. and Ms. Jones and whoever to help bring that into compliance.
Mr. Niblock, is the owner aware of what needs to be done to correct that?
I'm not sure I'm aware of everything that needs to be done. I do know it needs restroom facilities. There'll be some other accessibility issues, such as accessible parking. There may possibly be some ventilation issues if it's used as a repair garage. You're required a certain amount of air changes because of carbon monoxide and, and other objectionable gases and fumes, so I, I'm sorry, I can't tell you exactly what all would have to be done, but if the board chooses to grant the rezoning, as I said, we'll be glad to work with them and figure out what does need to be done, and, and work with them to get that accomplished in as timely a manner as possible.
Under the original certificate of occupancy, though, he, he didn't have to meet ADA requirements?
No, sir, because it was done as a residential accessory structure.
Right. But, if, if this property rezoned and used for commercial use, he would have to meet those standards, is that right?
He would have to meet the accessibility standards of the North Carolina Building Code, which in many cases overlap and, and are concurrent with the ADA. However, there are some additional ADA requirements that the code officials do not enforce in North Carolina, but yes, it would need to meet the North Carolina Accessibility Code.
The reason this is not a residential accessory building, though, as I understood, was the original resident that's no longer on the premises, is that correct?
That is my understanding. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've got one more question for Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, where I understand it, this whole area's changed, right, from what it was in September?
Under the, under the new plan? Yes, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, Chair, prepare for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the Zone and Map Amendment, to make a finding that although the proposal's not consistent with the 1997 Idell County Land Use Plan, the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the 2030 Horizon Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals and objectives of the 2030 Horizon Plan.
You've heard the motion. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I think we would be remiss if we didn't include in that motion the requirement that the owner bring this code up, bring this building up to the commercial code, as far as the installation of bathrooms, just to make sure there's no misunderstanding, 'cause Mr. Niblock, I'm sure, would feel more comfortable if it was a matter of record that he was instructed to do this.
Would you like to add that to your motion?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries five, oh.
The second item that I have tonight is a request for the approval of an interlocal agreement with the Town of Harmony. You've seen a, this agreement before. Four years ago, we entered into our first agreement with the town to perform planning and zoning services in conjunction with their, at the time, new zoning ordinance, and the way that the agreement is structured is that every two years, it comes up for another vote of the Commissioners and of the Town Board of Harmony. I have actually requested, I'm requesting approval of this agreement, however, I'm, I'm also adding into the agreement that instead of coming back every two years, that this be a continuous agreement that either party can opt out of, in, in lieu of coming back to both boards every two years. There's really no meaningful impact on our department. I think it's a good relationship, and they've adopted an ordinance that's very similar to what we administer for the entire county, or unincorporated parts of the county.
Any questions, Mr. Smith? How's the arrangement work? Has it worked pretty smoothly?
It does. We have a planner who is in our office most of the time, but goes up to Harmony for meetings and other issues that need attention, so it works, works very well, I think, actually.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion for the approval of interlocal agreement with Town of Harmony and zoning enforcement.
Mr. Norman makes a motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Like sign? Motion carries five, oh.
Next item I have is a request for the abandonment of road maintenance. This is a request that's come from NC DOT, our, our local office, and it's for a road, it's an unnamed road north of Mooresville at the 21 and 115 convergence, or split, whichever way you're looking at it. There's a gas station looking, located at that intersection with a small cut-through street of about 200 feet, I believe, 185 feet, that is used exactly for that. It's a cut-through to get between the two without having to go through the light and to bypass that. However, DOT has, in the past several years, reconstructed or reconfigured the 21 and 115 intersection at the light and made it a much better situation, and now, the cut-through road actually causes more problems than it does good. So, that is one of the reasons that they're asking for this abandonment of maintenance. This is the first part of the eventual removal of this road totally from the books. However, this is, this is the first step that the state generally goes through, and the planning staff has looked at this and recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions?
Back a year and a half ago, I used to drive this route routinely, and, and that, that little cut-through was a lifesaver. That's what kept north...
However, this is the first step that the state generally goes through, and the planning staff has looked at this and recommends approval.
Okay, any questions?
Back a year and a half ago, I used to drive this route routinely, and that little cut-through was a lifesaver. That's what kept northbound traffic on Stateville Highway from backing up forever. Now, it's been a year and a half since I've traveled it in the afternoon at traffic time, but we're pretty sure that we're not jumping out of the frying pan and into the fire?
In my opinion, no, because a lot of times, from my own personal observation, I've seen people that try to take the road, take that cut-through, and actually back up traffic that way. Rather than going up to the light, they'll cut through, maybe go over to Cornelius Road, and block traffic that way. So it's kind of a trade-off either way, I would say. I would anticipate that once things begin, and once the economy begins looking up and development comes back knocking on our door, we'll see more interest in that area, which is going to necessitate even bigger changes, I would suspect. And the Cornelius Road small area plan was kind of indicative of that. Some of the recommendations and input from that study lead towards those conclusions. But before things slowed down, there was a good bit of interest.
If we pass this, what are they going to do with that little road? Just put up some barriers, or are they going to plow it up?
I'm not quite sure what they would do.
Because my concern is if they put up a couple of barriers, and all of a sudden we have a big mess, can we undo this action?
They're probably just going to quit maintaining it to begin with, aren't they?
For right now, they're just going to stop maintaining it. To actually take it out of usage, they have to take it off the books, which would require a public hearing and coming back through a much more lengthy process.
Okay, so there aren't going to be big barriers erected?
Not my understanding at this point. However, if they take the next step, then it would be. And it might just be a situation where, well, I won't even go into what I would speculate, but at this point, I don't see them blocking up the road.
If we grant this request, can we un-grant it a year from now?
Well...
Assuming that they don't, again, that they don't literally dig the road up?
I think at that point, DOT would have to say yes or no, because then we would be asking them to take over the maintenance of the road. My guess is, based on this request, they wouldn't do it.
It's a messy intersection.
There's not a lot of room to fix it unless you do a wholesale...
I assume if they're going to relinquish maintenance, they'll take down the stop signs as well.
No, they'll have to...
I would, probably wouldn't happen until people are not driving on the road.
Right.
And if you'd like me to go back, I don't know that this is a time-sensitive request, but if you'd like for me to go back and get those questions answered, I'd be more than happy to do so.
Y'all mind if we did that?
That's fine, but...
Okay, I'd like to table it, if you could.
I'll support the motion. Let me ask you a question. Is this as much a matter of courtesy as it is anything? I mean, if they're going to stop maintaining the road, they're going to stop maintaining the road.
Well, the request from the state...
I mean, you know, they're not doing such a hot job of maintaining the roads anyway.
We're going to notice the difference. The bigger issue...
Maybe they're planting some flowers out there.
Yeah, I think the bigger issue is kind of that next step of taking it out of, or taking it off the books entirely. That's the bigger issue. So draw your own conclusion.
I appreciate what they do locally with the money they got, is the thing. I've said this repeatedly, the people in charge in Raleigh are kook burgers, they just, they don't know what they're doing.
Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Robertson?
Didn't we have a motion to table?
Motion, I already said motion to table.
What was that? Okay, motion to table?
Actually, nothing to table, Mr. Chairman. There's no motion.
I could have information...
I thought I did. Oh, there's no, there's no motion to table. Okay, I'm with you now. All right. Okay.
Okay. All in favor of table, then, say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
I'll plan to bring this back at the next meeting, I won't take... Speaking of tabling items, my next item is, and I apologize for this, we've been working very hard with a group of property owners along 21 south of Troutman, around the exit 42 area, and this is in conjunction with the RPO that we had proposed back in December. The reason for me asking to postpone or table this request is that we got some very good comments back from a group of property owners. However, we got them back so late in the game, it was actually the afternoon of the agenda deadline, and we had to do a lot of research on them and just could not formulate the amendment by this meeting. I do feel like we can get the amendment finished, we've been working on it since that time, and have it ready for the February 16th meeting if the board, if that's the wishes of the board.
Okay.
Just, you know, I know there's a lot of different opinions, just encourage you to let common sense prevail, but there were certainly some goals that you had for, to make sure that that intersection did not eventually have the same problems that we've seen at exit 28 and exit 36. So I still support your desire to make sure that by planning today, that we keep that from becoming a problem five years from now.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion?
Motion to table.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The final item that I have for you tonight is, refers and deals with the Carolina Thread Trail. You've heard over the last year or so from Randy Gates, who represents the Carolina Thread Trail, and at the first meeting that she came, the board adopted a resolution of support. And at the second meeting, which was a good while after the first, the board appointed a group of people as a steering committee to foster a countywide Greenways Master Plan that would, at the end of the day, lead to being able, or allowing the county and the municipalities to get grant money from the Carolina Thread Trail for implementation. One of the things that was not specifically dealt with at that time, at that second presentation, was the cost of the grant to the county and the municipalities, the amount of the grant, and kind of where do we go from here? That's what I've been dealing with since that time. And basically, where we are is that the county, or the steering committee has appointed me as their chair to usher this project through. The grant that we're eligible for is a $60,000 grant that would develop a Greenways Master Plan, as I mentioned earlier. The matching funds that are required to get the $60,000 are $6,000. And the reason that the Carolina Thread Trail requests that $6,000 in matching funds, and they do this for the entire 15-county region, is to get that additional level of support. It's a nominal amount in relation to the 60, according to them, and they want to see it, to get, to show that the counties and the municipalities support the project. Although I'm asking and referencing $6,000, I'm asking for and referencing $6,000, what I've done over the last couple of months is secured verbal agreements with each of the towns for different amounts of money, as I've shown you in the table on your memo. And I'll mention that I got a phone call from Harmony, and they have agreed to the $500 that I had said was anticipated. So what that leads me to is, the request for matching funds that I am asking for tonight is $1,500 only. This would be the final piece of the puzzle, going along with all of the municipalities to help us get that $60,000. I have $1,500 appropriated in my budget, I can cover that amount, have it in contracted services for projects such as this, or anything that you all may ask our department to undertake. So what I'm asking tonight is that you grant me the authority to go through with the grant application and to appropriate the $1,500, or actually, I guess it would be $6,000, and we would be reimbursed $4,500 from the towns. So for a net amount of $1,500 out of my budget, or as the Planning and Development Department's budget.
Questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve allowing Mr. Smith to utilize his budget to pay for the $1,500 as our portion of this effort.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table that motion.
Motion to table the motion. Mr. Robertson's motion, all in favor of the table of the motion, say aye.
What would be the purpose of table, Mr. Cale?
I would like to have a little more time to look into this and discuss it with staff. And frankly, it's a test vote.
Well, just up to this point, we've been supportive of this project up to beat. I'd be honest with Mr. Smith in saying that if, in upcoming budget, if he'd put this in his budget, I doubt it would get by the managers, and we'd probably never see it, given circumstances, but we have been supportive up to this point. We have commitments by all the municipalities. It seems like we're reneging on a commitment we made. We let everybody believe up to this point we were supportive, and all of a sudden we're not.
Mr. Chairman, I believe my support has been misinterpreted, because I think this board often supports things that other entities are paying for, but that doesn't mean that we have a financial commitment to these activities.
Mr. Chairman, I think since we've already asked the other communities to participate, we need to participate also.
Mr. Cale's motion's on the table, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like sign. Okay. Motion fails. Mr. Robertson's motion to, is now up. Would you repeat your motion to approve?
Yeah, to allow Mr. Smith to use the $1,500 out of his budget to contribute the Ardell County portion for this, for this basically participation in the grant.
Mr. Chairman, I was in opposition to the motion and would like to ask a question or two of staff. Mr. Mashburn, I noticed that you had said that, based on previous support by the board, you concur with the request, in your own judgment, without considering the board, and in consideration of the fact that we have a 5.6 million budget deficit facing us, and I believe his department is one of those departments that's got quite a bit of red ink, would you, in your judgment as county manager, still approve this?
Well, I'll say, if it was been requested to put into next year's budget, it would be extremely difficult under the present circumstances to recommend it in the FY10-11 budget. Mr. Smith and I talked long, long time about this $1,500, as well as, we did look at other options where we could draw some other funds from to do that in the current year, and felt that because of the board's support of this, that we felt it was, it had high enough priority that we should try to find the money for it. And these are funds that we do not anticipate using this year. Again, when we're looking at next year from the vantage point we're at right now, it would be difficult to do that in next year's budget. But from, you know, June may be a different story. I don't anticipate it to be that much different, but it would be a different story. I'm not trying to avoid the question, I'm just saying I'm trying to evaluate that this is a priority, that the board has established, and I feel that $1,500 to continue with that effort is an appropriate expenditure of county funds.
Another question? Motion's on the table. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next three items are items that will be brought by Mr. Lynn Neblock, also with the assistance of Dean Lael, and having to do with some grant funds that we anticipate receiving.
Good evening again. First item we have for the board tonight is memo number 11. Excuse me, as you'll recall, we were one of the formula counties that have been lucky enough to get funding with some of the stimulus funding from the Department of Energy, and we've broken that into several projects, but one of the projects was an upgrade of the lighting and some of the lighting controls in many of our buildings. We had earmarked $240,000 for that purpose of the stimulus funds. We have been approved by the Department of Energy for that expenditure for this purpose. We anticipate a potential cost savings of a little over $67,000 annually, which comes up to about a three and a half year payback on the expenditure. And then, of course, with the increased efficiency, we will continue to reap the benefits of reduced energy costs way beyond the payback period. We also propose to do this utilizing existing current county staff. Another purpose of the stimulus funding is to create or to preserve jobs, and this would allow us to utilize some current county staff that we possibly might have to lay off if we did not utilize this funding to cover the salaries for that. There are no local monies involved in this, it is all stimulus money, and there is a breakdown of the project ordinance attached. There's about 10 facilities that we're looking at working on, and if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to be a little bit more emphatic on one aspect of this, and that is on preserving jobs. I don't think there's any question that in the inspections Department, with the workload being what it is right now, that when the temporary assignments that we have, many of them on right now, when that ends, and it ends, and some have already ended, and some will be ending soon, that we would have no choice but to lay off employees in the inspections Department. What this will allow us to do is to continue the employment of those inspectors, because most of them, all of them have trades, the skills that are going to be necessary to do this installation. So our plan is to do exactly that, to use the, our employees in the inspections Department, and we've cleared this through the Department of Energy already, that this is, it's agreeable for us to utilize our current employees, that we would be laying off for that purpose.
We have cleared that through the Department of Energy, and we also have an interpretation from the school of government that there's no issue with utilizing our staff to perform this work either.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Chairman, turn to the motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve. Mr. Cato, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you. And to go along with this, we have memo number 12, and I'll let Mr. Lael present that since that's his line of expertise. This would be for the materials for the project.
Good evening, gentlemen. Subsequent to the award of this grant, we went ahead and went out for formal bids to procure the energy-efficient lighting and supplies that we need to be able to upgrade this lighting. As we went out, we did receive three bids, one no quote. All three were relatively local bidders. One very local bidder, Ligon, was the lowest, offering a bid of $68,016.29. Unfortunately, not all of the products that they bid met one of the provisions of the grant, the Buy America provision. Section 1605 of the ARA requires that any iron, steel, or manufactured products to be used in construction projects be manufactured in the United States. We did get a ruling from the legal legals at the School of Government that said that they would not consider this construction. This would be a maintenance project.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Speak up, please.
I apologize. We did get a ruling from the School of Government. Some of the legal folks up there did tell us they would not consider this a construction project. It is simply a maintenance-type project. So that particular provision of the Buy America provision does not necessarily fit in this case. Regardless, we did apply for a waiver of that provision just in case. The reason we're requesting that waiver and to be able to award to the low bidder is that that bidder is local to Ardel County. We've dealt with them for a long period of time. The product that they are going to be providing is an excellent product, and our staff is comfortable with using them. In addition to that, the low bid would allow an additional $20,000 to be used towards this project to be able to buy more supplies, be able to keep staff working even more. Our request this evening is basically contingent on the waiver in case the federal government does not decide to fight in the same way that we've decided. In other words, we're requesting that you grant this, excuse me, I apologize, lost my place. We're requesting that you grant this award to Ligon provisional to that waiver. If the waiver's not granted, that you go ahead and allow us to award to Besco, who is the next, the only bidder that actually met that Buy America provision. And in that case, we'll be able to move on with that project. So the request is to be able to award to Ligon provisional to the Buy America waiver.
I have a simple question. If you put out a bid for 12 red trucks and somebody gave you a proposal for 11 blue trucks, would you accept the bid?
No, sir.
Why, if your proposal request was for Buy American, why did you accept proposals that weren't American-made?
Basically, this particular product, the ballast that is included in this bid, very few of those are actually made to the specifications in this particular project. I'll let Mr. Neblock discuss that with you. But very few of those are actually made in the United States. There's about 95% are not made, leaving 5% that are, which leaves us at a shortage of being able to get these products in the United States.
Is that the reason why they didn't bid on, you know?
Yes, sir. That's why two of the bidders did not bid under the Buy American or the strictly American provisions.
How much short are they on buying All American? And let me say, I mean, we're sitting here with 13% local unemployment, 10% nationally, and that's not even reported all that accurately. Some of the figures I've seen batted around say that their national unemployment figures are actually somewhere 16 to 18%. And taking stimulus money and buying stuff made in China, I think kind of defeats the whole purpose of the stimulus funds. And I know it goes to a local contractor, but if he just turns around and buys stuff made in China, I just don't, I don't know how that's really benefited the nation. I mean, is 95% of his stuff made in America and 5% made in China or Mozambique or wherever it came from? I mean, you know, it seems like Besco, even though they're in Huntersville, they're not in states full of Mooresville, it seems like we asked them to bid with a certain set of rules. They followed the rules. Now we're going to give the bid to somebody who didn't follow the rules. And you go, well, there are really hard rules to follow. Well, there were probably pretty hard rules for Besco to follow as well.
Initially, sir, we did go on that premise that we would have to reject that. The only reason that we decided to try to request or to request this board award to Ligon is for the additional monies to be able to maybe prolong this project or at least increase the scope of this project. Our bid was made to where, to the point that we could increase the project if it's possible. In this case, we've got $20,000, we could increase the project. Our main intent was to keep our staff working.
May I ask a question here, Mr. Chairman? Did we not anticipate the request for a waiver, though, when we were going out to bid?
Yes, if I might elaborate, there is a provision under the AAR Act that says that there is a Buy American provision, but there also is a provision that if you buy American and that price exceeds 25% greater or more than if you don't buy American, that you can ask for this waiver, which is what we have done. The actual ballasts that they bid are actually made in Mexico under the NAFTA agreement. And according to discussions with our facility services staff, which is going to have to maintain these things for years to come, they actually say they get better service out of those ballasts than the ones that are made in America.
Any other question?
I just want to completely understand the answer to Mr. Robertson's question. Did we put out a set of rules that were uniform and ask everybody to bid under those uniform rules? And then did we accept a bid that was not compliant with those rules? Or did we consider a bid that was not compliant with those rules? Or, and let me ask a third way, did someone submit a bid that wasn't compliant with those rules?
Yes, sir. We did go out with uniform rules according to what the federal government, what the Department of Energy gave us. Those provisions did include the Buy America. Yes, sir, they all were aware of that provision. Yes, we got two bidders that did not meet the complete intent of that specification as based on the provisions. The contractual requirement for the Buy America is federal. They do give us the ability to request a waiver, which is what we've done. And to just straight answer your question, sir, yes, we did go out to everybody with the same specifications. Yes, two bidders did not meet the Buy America specifically.
Well, as somebody who's been on the bidding end of stuff, I've had people put out a contract and I bid on it just the way it was written, and somebody else bid on it different, changed the rules. And, you know, had I been able to bid with that different set of rules, I could have had a better price. I always thought it was unfair. Then, I think it's unfair now. If you give people a set of rules, they either bid on it that way. If we're going to change the rules, it needs to be rebid under the new rules.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Robertson, and I move that we ask the staff to redo the bidding process and require uniform bidding rules.
Okay, heard the motion?
Either that or we accept the bid from Besco.
Or, yeah, that's, I retract my motion.
We can do it that way or rebid it. But I'm going to tell you, just my, you know, folks, we're Americans and we're getting our rear ends handed to us here. And the unemployment is going to continue to go up so long as we save a nickel buying stuff from other places and then we end up paying people to sit on unemployment for a year and a half. We just can't keep going like this. If you do put it out, if we do want to put it back out for bid, if there is an item or two that is almost impossible to get, and I understand that there are probably, that doesn't surprise me when you say that. I mean, I go to Walmart and everything's made in China. I go to Target to look for stuff because I'm tired of seeing everything in Walmart made in China. I go to Target, everything's made in China there. So then I go to Lowe's Home Improvement, and everything's made in China there. I don't even have a choice hardly anymore, you know, for certain items if you're not going to buy it made in China, you just, you have no choices but to buy that. When we're in those situations, and if we're in that situation and you want to change some of these items so that they can be bid using foreign-made goods, I'd be willing to go back and let you rebid, but I'd certainly want that to be the exception to the rule and not the rule.
Well, apparently Besco didn't have that problem, right?
Well, I'm assuming that what we're buying is lighting fixtures.
Well, actually, what we're buying is ballast. We're not changing out the whole fixtures. We're buying ballast, we're buying lamps, and various connectors, wire nuts, and the other things that have to be switched out to upgrade them to the T8 lamps and the more energy-efficient ballast.
I mean, there's probably seven thousand different components, seven, I bet there's seven, almost eight thousand different individual items here that you're ordering. I mean, you know, one category was 2,000, another one's 3,600. Which one of these were they saying that they can't get?
Mostly the ballast, sir.
Most of the ballast is most of the project.
I have a hard time finding a ballast made in the United States, I can tell you that.
If it does please the board, you can award to Besco. They are the one bidder that did meet all of the provisions of the bid package. And that is also the board's discretion.
How long would it take you to rebid it with modified rules?
As a formal bid, we would be able to present to the board again in February, March, the first meeting in March.
Now, how long would it take you to, how long do we postpone this thing? Does that cause?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. You know, we may save $20,000 by going out and rebidding, but we may lose that in having to lay off people until we get all of that done. So, I mean, this would allow, if you approve this, this allows us to go ahead and immediately get the materials in and start the project. If we delay it by another 30 days, then that may be 30 days that we have to lay somebody off, and it may eat up the savings that we've got. Or at least part of them.
Or it could reduce $20,000 that you could spend on personnel now you're going to spend.
Say again, sir.
It reduces the amount you can spend on labor by $20,000.
That's correct.
To increase the cost.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm not much on these, I wasn't a big fan of the stimulus, and I'm not a big fan of these make-work projects. I mean, I read Milton Friedman's book, Free to Choose, and he went to the Far East one time and they were digging a canal, and they had thousands of people digging the canal. And they were all in the canal with shovels, digging. And he says, why don't you have big hearse-moving equipment out here digging this canal? And the fellow said, because it's a jobs program. And he said, well, if that's the case, why don't you give them spoons? I mean, but there's two ways to look at this thing. One goal is, certainly you want to buy American, but the other is you want to keep your folks working. I think that's the trade-off here in my mind.
So every dime that we save in material, we can convert that over to our labor?
Well, labor and additional materials if we need it.
Expand the scope of the project.
And I will say that we, first of all, we operated under the premise that those that bid understood that, yes, there is a Buy America provision in it, but they also understood that there is an opportunity, as the regulations say, for a waiver if it can be justified. So to say that no one else, that one operated under one set of rules and the other one operated under a separate set of rules, our assumption was that all that bid understood the federal rules that we were operating under. Now, that may or may not have been the case. If it wasn't the case, then obviously we don't have apples to apples here. The other thing is that we talked about the possibility of, you know, buying totally America-created jobs, but we don't know where those jobs were. But we knew that if we buy from a local vendor, that it supported a local vendor who employed people in their warehouses or whatever. And so we felt like we were supporting local jobs when we did that. And that was our reason for recommending it the way that we did.
We also, I'm sorry. We also discussed that if we go with our local vendor...
Can you please speak into the microphone? I cannot hear you all.
We also discussed that if we went with our local vendor, the tax money would be, sales tax would be spent in Ardel County, which would be some benefit to the county as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it seems like it's probably not a coincidence that the only bidder that complied with the exact rules was also the high bidder by $20,000 to me. I do agree with these gentlemen that, you know, if we save the $20,000, we're going to spend $20,000 here in Ardel County on Ardel County personnel. And it just seems to me fair to go back and tell everybody, we're going to redo this, we're going to let everybody know exactly what the rules are, and we're going to let this high bidder come back at us and try to, try again. And my motion is...
You made a motion.
Well, I retracted it, but I'm putting it right back up there again now and saying that we go back to bids.
Mr. Lael, can we do that? Is there, can we do that and have it back here by the mid-monthly meeting?
By this mid-month? No, sir. It's a formal bid. And a formal bid would take at least two weeks to prepare, set out, receive. We have to advertise a minimum period, which is seven days, before we can even open.
Okay.
Then we have to present it to the commissioner. The soonest we'll be able to bring that back to the commissioners will be the 15th of March. Excuse me, no, the first of March, I apologize, the first meeting in March.
What about by the winter planning retreat?
I'm sorry, sir?
What about by the winter planning retreat? Could it be back by then?
Is that scheduled?
26th of February.
Mr. Mashburn, let me make sure I understood you properly earlier. We've got people in the maintenance department now who are running out of something to do.
We have them in the maintenance department and the tax department. We've got them where we had people that were being contracted. We eliminated those contracts and put our people to work in them. But what's happened is that those are running out now. So we're either going to, we're either faced with funding additional work for them or laying them off. And what this does, it just allows us to keep our employees for a longer period of time.
Working at least a little longer.
Mr. Mashburn, does the delay caused by my motion throw a monkey wrench into all this and cost us money somewhere? I guess is my question.
Mr. Lael, Neblock, if they approve the motion tonight, when would be the earliest that you would be able to start the employees to work?
We should be able to start within the next two weeks.
So you're, we're delaying it maybe by two weeks, okay?
And what's the fiscal impact of that? If any?
Not as bad as it would be if it was 30 days. So that's probably much more reasonable and much more doable to do that. If we can get it out to bid and get it back in and be able to, if we could get it by the 26th, that would probably allow us to start pretty close to the first of March. And that would fit in much better with our schedule.
There's a motion on the table.
One more question.
Any other questions?
Were all bidders aware of the waiver process?
All bidders were aware of the American provision, the waiver process is part of that. I would say they'd have to be, yes, sir. Now, that's, let me rephrase that. The Besco, the representative from Besco was the first one to bring the point that very few of the ballasts were made in the United States. They're aware of it. The second two bidders were very... The second two bidders were very aware of it at the bid opening, so based on that, I'd have to say they did know, sir. All provisions in the, of the federal requirements under this bid package were made aware in that bid package.
You completed the waiver provision correctly.
Yes.
Say that again.
All of the provisions that are required by the ARRA were in the bid package. They were there for them to research, read, and to find, and that waiver portion of it is included in that.
So, if they had carefully read the package you sent them, they should have been aware of the waiver?
Yes, sir.
That a waiver could be requested?
Yes, sir, that a waiver could be requested.
But they might have thought that you would have had to already request it for them to, to be, make them avail themselves of that. They might have thought that.
Did you tell them you were going to request it?
We did not know whether we would qualify until we received the bids. Because they had to be 25% higher for Buy American to request the waiver, so until the bids were received, not knowing what the bids were going to come in at, we did not know whether we would qualify for the waiver or not.
That's correct.
I apologize, could you remind me the total amount of this bid?
Total amount of this bid? The low bid was $68,016.29.
$68,000?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that just seems like an awful lot of difference, $20,000. It just seems to me like they must have bid it differently, the low bidders.
Of course they did.
Well, I'm, I'm...
Listen, you can pay a Chinaman a buck eighty-three an hour, and that stuff is going to be a lot cheaper than when you're paying an American 15 bucks an hour. I mean, it's a factor of 10 on your labor costs, you know, you throw environmental...
My concern is, is Besco's even American-made, how do we know?
No, well, what they said was, it is. They're required, they can't, they can't ship us stuff made in...
If nobody else can buy it, how can they buy it?
Well, they said they were available, there just weren't many suppliers.
If you've got an extra 30%, Mr. Chairman, you can, I guess you can buy it, but I just think we need to be fair with these bidders, and I don't think we were necessarily.
I don't...
Okay.
Well, if the bid packet for each one of them contained the waiver provision, they were aware that they could seek a waiver, or that some waiver could have, could be sought in the future. I mean, I, yeah, I'm sitting here, I don't, I don't know that it's my job then to mitigate unfair trade policies we have, it's my job to get the most dollars we can for Aridale County, and it's my job that if we've got some people that can do it in-house, then we can steer another $20,000 toward keeping those people gainfully employed, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I mean, I tell you guys, I buy ballast, they're hard to find in the United States. They're just, that's not my fault, that's not anybody's fault, they're just hard to find. And I'll tell you what, if I could find them, I probably wouldn't buy them, they're going to be very expensive. And there's a lot of reasons why they're more expensive, OSHA regulations, depreciation schedules set up by the federal government, environmental regulations, it's a whole, there's a whole lot of other reasons. Capital gains taxes presents, prevents people from investing in modernized equipment, there's a whole lot of things.
Okay.
I don't disagree with the word you said.
The motion that you proposed was...
Go back to bids.
Go back out to bids.
Okay.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Do you want to put a timeline? I mean, I guess we can't put a timeline on it, but we're suggesting the 26th.
Quick as they can. Sir, may I make one more comment? If we do go out to bid, we will have to use the same provisions the ARRA required the first time, which will include the Buy American. The exception can only be requested after the bid amount, after the bids are to be received. So, we'll have to go back out with the same provisions.
They may get the same result.
Yes, sir.
Well, but with a better understanding from the third company, we would assume. I mean, they, I just, it just, you know, this just is a matter of business, if, like Mr. Robertson said, if I were bidding on this and it seemed to me like it wasn't understandable, and I came in and spent $20,000 more going out trying to find something that I thought I was supposed to find, I'd be a little less likely to interact with whoever I was, you know, bidding with.
We don't know it'll be 20,000 next time, it could be 35,000. You know, the difference could be anything. Back out to bid, you know.
If they can go out to these sources that the other two companies could, they may come in as a low bid. They come in lower than the bids we got.
Okay. You've heard the motion, it's been a lot of discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
No.
Motion carries, three, two.
And that's, we voted to allow them to rebid it, correct?
Bid it, yeah.
Okay.
Chairman Williams, may I get the hands or the names of the ones who voted negative?
Negative.
Mr. Johnson and Mr. North, thank you.
What, you wanted to accept the bid?
Don't vote again. Thank you, I got one more. Hopefully this one will be a little easier. The last item I have before you tonight is the project ordinance, request for approval of the project ordinance for the rail project for Providencia USA. As many of you will remember, we did a very similar product for Pratt Industries within the last year or so, out at the West Industrial Park. This will be an additional spur coming off of that spur to serve the new Providencia manufacturing plant that will be located in that industrial park. There is a copy of the grant ordinance, project ordinance, attached to show you the different funding sources for that and the estimated expenditures for that project. And if anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. Any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Litt, I think you have the next item.
Yes, sir, the next item we have should be equally simple. Tax Assessor is undergoing one of its most difficult private evaluations. They did budget for a piece of specialized software that'll assist appraisals in speeding up and, I apologize, is that better? Okay. Aridale County Tax Assessor is in one of its most difficult appraisals this year. To prepare for the process, they did budget for a piece of software that allows their appraisers to more easily and faster appraise their software and get a more, more accurate evaluation. This particular piece of software, Spatialist, is only created and sold by one company, and it is in this board's ability to be able to award a sole-source contract for the purchase of this software, provided there is no competition for it. I have verified through several phone calls and other research materials to, that there is no other maker of software that runs on this line that provides this same type of product. Requested by the county tax assessor to award a sole-source contract to purchase Spatialist from 3G.
Questions, Mr. Litt?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Litt, how long, you think, how long will we be using this software?
I'll have to defer to Mr. Doolittle. How long?
Mr. Doolittle, come up to the...
We would use it probably for about the next four reappraisals, which would be about 16 years.
16 years?
We're using the software that we have now for 25, and it's getting kind of antiquated.
And there's really nowhere else to get software that you need?
Not that can do what this one does, no, sir.
My only concern, I guess, is just when you've got a kind of a monopoly, you know, they kind of got you.
To some extent, that's true. We have looked at, there are a few vendors who offer a little bit of services similar to this, but we have to buy their entire package, that's a million dollars. We took the lesser option. This is a standalone versus buying an entire system.
Is the rest of your stuff, the other $900,000 worth, it's working pretty well for you?
We didn't spend that much, no, sir.
Well, I'm just quantifying the...
It's, it's been rewritten, it's the same vendor, but he's rewriting it in a .net version, and this will work with the new software. Basically, it's old software rewritten in an updated fashion, it would be .net using SQL Server, so we can get another life of it. What happened is, the software that we had before was specialized to a certain computer, which Hewlett Packard no longer manufactures or will support. We had no choice but to move forward.
Has this outfit been in business a while, or?
Yes, sir, and there's four users in North Carolina and a fifth one coming online. So, educate me just a minute on what this will do. If you want them to figure out what my property's worth, then this thing would direct you to something in the database in your office of a property, of a comparable piece of property of mine, and you would use that sale of that property to arrive at some value of my property? Is... Yes, sir. Give you a little better explanation of what this does. Basically, our system is more or less a specialized cost system based on our local market. This uses data to help build our schedule of values based on location and location factors, such as this on a golf course, Lakeview, Lake Access, those things that contribute to value based on its location. This is a spatial product dealing with location, which is, we all know, is the most important aspect of the part of value, is where is it? And this is what this is, to help us determine that part of it.
Okay. Any other questions? Chair, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tracy, you going to present both of the next items?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm here tonight on behalf of Parks and Rec. They're coming to you with a request to purchase a parcel that is attached to or adjoining to the proposed Scotts Rosenwald Park, and it's highlighted here in orange, and this area here is the actual, get a pointer here, is the actual park itself. This is a driveway coming off of Scotts Creek into the park. Purchasing this parcel would allow us to have total control, there isn't easement, I understand, at this time, but it would give us total control over this, this area, this drive, as long as the county has that park. And we feel like that is an advantage to the county and to Parks and Recreation, and what we're asking is permission to approach the owner to make an offer. This would not be from county funds, this would be contingent on the part-of-funds, we would use the part-of-funds for that. So, are there any questions?
Mr. Jackson, would this be money we would spend and then be reimbursed to us from the part-of-funds, or?
I believe so, isn't it?
Correct.
Let Mr. Woody answer that for us.
Yeah, this, this money would be, this purchase would be contingent upon being awarded the part-of grant.
Okay.
So, it would not actually be purchased until the grant was awarded.
Okay. The grant, Mr. Woody, you submitted that grant Friday?
Friday.
And do you have any anticipation of when you may hear back about approval on that?
That, May.
Pardon?
Month of May.
There's no matching required, right? No matching funds?
No, the value of the property, the difference in the value, the property would be purchased through what's called a bargain sale, and it's valued at 20,000. And they, the owner would sell it for less than what the value is, and the difference in the value would be our match.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr. Woody, I'm, when you say value, how do you arrive at that definition? In other words, you say the value is 20,000, but we can buy it for 8,000. It seems like if the value were 20,000, and you could buy it for 8,000, then some sensible person would go out and make $14,000 next week. So, I guess I'm saying, how do we, how do we decide that the value is 20,000?
Well, the tax value on it's 20,000, it's also appraised for 20,000.
Mr. Woody did get an appraisal on that from a private appraiser, and I have spoken to the owner, just to let them know what our intent was, so they are aware that county's interested in this property. The folks that own this, developers, also have a subdivision that goes around the outside of the park, perimeter of the park, so they do see some benefit in terms of relinquishing that property. It's property that can't be used anyways for a home site, they've told us it doesn't perk, so even though it's appraised for 20,000, it's...
I'm not worried of that.
Right.
It's got county water to it.
It runs in front of there.
Anyone else?
Motion to approve this request, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
Next item I have is something that was discussed by the board in the past. It is the proposed contract between Aridale County and the Kiwanis for the state's full fairground, excuse me, Aridale County Fairground. If you, if you don't mind, I have a copy of a draft that may help you, it actually has the colored highlights, whereas the copies you have in your packets are just black and white, so this might be a little easier to read and understand the changes that have taken place. What brought about this proposed contract was some of the controversy that came about from the Field of Steel event that was held, I guess, back in 2005. Some of the changes in the proposed contract or agreement are mainly grammatical, clearing up errors, that type of thing. The other changes are content, and if you don't mind, I'll just jump to some of the more pertinent changes as we go through this four-page document, as far as the actual more pertinent changes as we go through this four-page document as far as the actual content of the agreement. One of the bigger changes on page one is highlighted in red towards the end of the page there, which says either party may terminate this lease with one year's notice to the other party. There was no termination clause in the previous agreement, so that has been included in this one. On page two, item number three was expanded to give a better description of what would or wouldn't be tolerated at the fairground. So, it gives the fairgrounds committee a little more leeway and also definition clarification in terms of what will and will not be allowed at the fairground. If you have any questions as we go through, please feel free to ask. Item number four specifies that if alcohol is served, how it can be served, where it will be served, and the restrictions that are associated with that. If you go down to the bottom of the page, the new item number eight, the liability limits were increased for the insurance to reflect current requirements. Page three, new item number nine, goes into detail about the lessor and lessy cost and expenses, who will be responsible for what, and the associated amounts. Item, new item ten A is just a clarification of when the actual fairground committee will meet. Basically, they're going to meet annually during the term of each year of the lease, twice. So, that's just been clarified. Those were the major changes. Really, item number three and item number four are probably the more controversial items that were added, or added to address some more controversial items that have occurred or been brought up about the fairground. So, go ahead and answer any questions if you have those right now.
Have any question for Mr. Jackson? Mr. Johnson serves on this committee, he can also answer questions. Mr. Johnson, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, we had a good bit of discussion over this. Mr. Chairman, and I thank Mr. Jackson for his work on it. He played the part of secretary and keeper of the minute and so forth, and he did a good job. We felt like that there should be some clause concerning, excuse me, indecent, obscene, or what some folks might consider offensive activities there, and to explain the process a little more in detail, that if there's a request such as the, was it field of steel?
Right.
Right. Something of that comes up, then there will be a call meeting of the fairgrounds inspection committee, with Mr. Mashburn and I, and Mr. Vaughn, excuse me, and some of the folks from the Kiwanis Club, we would have a call meeting, and we would decide whether we would allow that activity at the fairground. So, we felt like right now that there is really no regulation as far as how much of the fairground could be used, or what area of the fairground could be used as related to the consumption of alcohol, and we felt like that amount of area should be regulated. And they can have more than one space on the fairground, but that whole area can constitute more than, no more than six thousand square feet.
Any other questions? For Mr. Jackson or Mr. Johnson?
I've got to know what a field of steel is.
You should have been here.
I must have slept through that one.
You won't the next time.
All right.
I got, I got visits from the ladies down at the Bible Study Club, and they about preached my soul into perdition for that, so I felt like we had to do something, and we did, so...
I'll look it up on the internet, I guess.
Yeah.
You'll be surprised what you see.
Yeah, yeah, you didn't want that.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I was just going to say one thing, I expressed this concern, maybe I didn't. Under Mr. Jackson, I directed the attention to page two as far as paragraph four as it relates to the alcohol consumption.
Yes.
And I'd really like some wording in there, to be honest with you, that says that the area relegated to alcohol consumption shall be on the interior of the property.
Okay.
I don't want somebody to, concern I have, I don't want to go into the gate of the fairgrounds and some activity, and the first thing they're greeted by is a beer garden. If we could just say area designated...
Right, and the way that's worded now, it says, any event or function that predetermined location shall be set aside, and just to discuss that for a second, who has that authority to predetermine? I'm assuming would be the fairground committee or the Kiwanis.
Probably Mr. Head in this regard.
Right.
I just think maybe we need to give him a little more guidance. I think he had that understanding when we left there, and I think he agreed with it. Let's just say the area shall be set aside and be located...
Just say, how about if you say, instead of a predetermined location, say an interior?
Yeah, and the interior of the property.
Okay.
So, just so I understand, starting at the beginning, the lessy agrees that if alcohol is served at any event or function, that the interior location shall be set aside, or that a interior, an interior location?
Yeah, that's...
Indoor.
Well, not necessarily indoor, but...
There being indoor.
Let's just say this, let's say, I think Mr. Jackson started it off well there. Lessy agrees that if alcohol is served in any event or function, that a predetermined interior location shall be set.
Mr. Johnson, by interior, you're talking about interior to the site, not inside a building?
Right.
Okay.
That's cool.
Okay. Motion is to approve as amended by Mr. Johnson.
Motion to approve as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is just, I passed out a while ago, a draft agenda for the upcoming winter planning, budget planning session, and would just like to request your approval of that. That's not to say that you still can't amend it between now and then, but so that we could go ahead and send something out, this would be the...
Can these days be with you?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, could I...
I wired my world around these two days.
Could I ask that we add one thing to the agenda, and it won't take but just a few minutes, I'm sure. Mr. Mashburn, I spoke to Mr. Smith about it, and I've had some complaints out in the county, and that has to do with abandoned mobile homes. And I believe it was Mr. Lambert from Solid Waste who made me or made the board aware sometime back of a new state statute that gave counties of authority on how to dispose of abandoned mobile homes. Now, there's money been set aside or being set aside at the state to address these matters. My understanding from talking to Mr. Smith and Mr. Niblock, there's not a lot of money in that fund yet. But I would like for us, if Mr. Smith could just come for a few minutes and brief us on what that statute is and what authority we've been given, and if it's the collective judgment of this board that we adopt some ordinance as far as the disposal of mobile homes, we go ahead and consider that so that we'll be ready when those funds become available. Now, I want to lay the fears of some of my more libertarian colleagues here, who already see a smirk coming on their face, that, Mr. Williams, we're not talking about mobile homes used for agricultural use, I want to make it very clear, okay? We're talking about, and there are a couple that I could take you out in the county and show you two that have just been left and the windows are out.
Yes.
We ain't going to cars. These are no man's treasure, Mr. Ross.
If he could just take a few minutes to brief us on that.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Consent, that'd be all right? Mr. Smith, you understand what we're after? Okay, great.
If you need to bring Mr. Lambert along, we'll be glad to have him too.
We don't, we're not going to feed him breakfast. Okay, moving on. Oh, we've got to approve the, the retreat. This is okay with everybody, is there a motion we set this day's?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of January nineteenth and twenty-first?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the January nineteenth minutes and table the approval of the January twenty-first minutes.
You have any...
A reason?
Yes, sir. Reason for that?
Well, the minutes that we have here for the twenty-first are very sparse, and I know that minutes were kept by the town of Mooresville, and I would like to, and they may have kept much more detailed minutes. Personally, before we commit our version of it, I would like to see the town of Mooresville's version and make sure that our version reconciles with theirs.
Okay, there's a motion on the table, we approve the January nineteenth minutes, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign. Mr. Mashburn, can you get a copy of those minutes?
Yeah, I will. I, but I would like to address that, that room was not the most conducive for recording the minutes, and so, and actually, Rita is the one that transcribed these, and we discussed with it, some of it was not that audible, and so, I said, make sure you cover the main points that were covered and any actions that were taken, but we did not necessarily try to transcribe it verbatim. I do, I do know that they didn't, if they recorded it, it was the video recording, and I don't know how well that was done. There was no one from the city of Mooresville, the town of Mooresville, actually taking minutes. We did that, but they did record it by video, so we can take a look at that and see if it's any better than what we got. The last thing is a extension of the two thousand and ten listing period until February the third. Mr. Doolittle?
Good evening. The last day of listing was Janu, would have normally been January third, first, but it fell on a weekend, so it moved to the first business day, which was Monday. We were closed Monday, and the weather was not very good today either, so we asked that we extend it to the third to, for citizens to avoid a late listing penalty.
Okay. Any questions? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign.
Thank you.
Okay. Announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, two announcements, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one announcement, Animal Grievance Committee, one announcement. Appointments to boards and commissions, Criminal Justice Partnership Program, one appointment. Does anybody have a nomination?
Mr. Criminal Justice, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't paying attention.
Yes, Criminal Justice.
Nominate Mr. David Crosby.
Mr. David Crosby hasn't been nominated. Any other nominations? Here are none, I move the nominations be closed, and David Crosby be accepted by acclamation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Mr. Crosby. Nursing Home Advisory Committee, one appointment. Are there any nominations?
This is the announcement.
One appointment, yeah.
Motion to table.
Motion's been tabled, motion to table this nomination. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries.
Actually, on the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, we do have two people that have agreed to serve.
You want to revise them? You want to, we're just announcing this this week.
Okay, I'm sorry. But we do have some...
We can go ahead and...
Yeah, they're on the reminder list.
We can go ahead and...
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Want me to go ahead and appoint those two? All right, for the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, nominate Gene Inyard, I guess it is, and Linda Harmon.
Okay. Any other nominations? Here are none, I move we accept these two by acclamation, all in favor say aye.
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 Pose like sign, the motion carries. Okay. Unfinished business. Public comment period. This is the first meeting, so it's not tonight. New business? County manager report?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to add, just to confirm, I think because of the inclement weather conditions that we had on Monday, we did, of course, call, close the offices, but we did use that as one of the furlough days that had been designated, and we substituted the furlough day of February the fifteenth. So, as it stands right now, we have one more furlough day that is scheduled. Hopefully, we don't have to use another one of those for, you know, they're still calling for some weather coming in this weekend as well. Just wanted to make you aware of what we had done as far as the furlough day.
I move that we enter into closed session under economic developments, GS 143 through eighteen, eleven A four, and personnel, GS 143 through eighteen, eleven A six.
Before we do that, can I make a, I'd like to make a comment about something under unfinished business, I didn't hear you go through that. I mean, if you did, I missed it, sorry.
You did, I did.
Okay, well, I missed it. Before we go into closed session, can I? Lately, we've taken the task by some folks and the letter writers and the newspaper and about building an animal shelter at this time, and my email inbox has been inundated with emails, people saying that we, because our animal shelter, because we do euthanize strays that... we do euthanize, um, strays that, that nobody wants and, and we can't afford to keep that, that number. Um, in, in fact, today, I was called, uh, in one email, they referred to us as a bunch of inbred rednecks, because we allow that to happen. Um, when it comes to animals, I guess, I guess it's hard to get, um, unanimous approval over what's the, what's the right thing to do. Just for clarification, the animal shelter was not, our animal shelter really was marginally compliant with the, with the, with the, the standards of, uh, of health and safety for not only the animals, but for the, for the workers. When, uh, when we made the decision that we needed to do something about the animal shelter, um, that was long before this economic downturn began. Um, we made the decision that we needed to, to do something different, and, and that was the right decision then, it's the right decision now. We did receive the benefit that in this economic downturn, when it was time to actually build the shelter, it came in under, under the cost that we had expected that it was, that it was gonna be. So it turns out that, that we received somewhat of a, of a, of a benefit in that, in that it cost the taxpayers less to actually provide an animal shelter that people would be proud of and not ashamed of, and, um, and, uh, and as far as the heating and air conditioning system and the, that, um, that utilized some, some geothermal technology, that was not used with county dollars, that came from a federal grant that was specifically supposed to be used for that purpose. So, um, there were no local monies used for that, had we not, had we not taken advantage of, of the opportunity of, of putting that system in a new building, we probably wouldn't have been able to utilize those dollars. So, um, so a- as it relates to, uh, to the animal shelter, this, this board has been very thrifty with your, with your dollars, but just because we are in an economic downturn doesn't mean that everything in county government stops. I mean, yeah, we're, you know, we're in a tough situation, but it doesn't mean that we close the libraries. You know, it doesn't mean that everything stops except for the police department and the fire trucks, and, and, uh, and, and it's a real balancing act to figure out how that happens. So, uh, I just don't want the, I don't want the public to think that, that here we are, you know, struggling with, with, um, having to keep employees or let employees go, yet we're building, uh, you know, we're building new buildings for, for stray dogs. That's, that's not the case at all. That's all I have to say.
Well, as follow up to your emails, if you will notice that about nine out of ten of them are, don't even come from the state.
Yep.
This is a national campaign, it's been put on all, all commissioners. Uh, they're not just picking on us, they're picking on all commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor that we go into closed session.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[802.86]
There are any motions?
No.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
But I'm not gonna make it. I'm just saying.
Where's the sheet for... I'll make it. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to call for a public hearing on February 16th, 2010, at seven o'clock regarding an economic development incentive of forty-three thousand dollars, seven hundred and... forty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars over a five-year period for an undisclosed company based on a three million dollar investment in Ardell County.
If you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
No.
Motion carries four oh one. Is your motion adjourned?
So moved.
Motion adjourned. All in favor say aye. We are adjourned.